All right, we're gonna go, we'll start over. We'll open the meeting. We'll start with a roll call with Alex.
Alexander Graham, President.
Tom Bouchard, President.
Bob Goslin.
Jonathan Barnett.
All right, so we're missing Dave Gavigan. And we will move on, move forward with four members. And our first item on the agenda is Lynn Sweet with LDS Consulting and Town Planner, Val, to present proposed changes to the ADU, which is the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. This bylaw has been a gem for our town. It kind of replaced the old-fashioned in-law apartment bylaw, which was put into effect many years ago, but if you had an in-law that wanted to build an apartment on your house, and then when they went away, the whole permit went away. It, I'll make it quick, but it changed into ADU dwelling unit. And a dwelling unit can be a relative, it can be a non-relative. If your relative lives there and they pass away, you can rent it as long as it's owner-occupied. That's where we're at today. When this bylaw came into effect, there was a lot of nervousness about it. That's why we formed it, to make sure it would pass town meeting. And there was a lot of restrictions. We're now seeing how well it's worked. Families, instead of having elderly parents, or older parents, I should say, because I'm one of those now, going into, what do you call the housing?
Assisted living.
Assisted living?
Assisted living, and spending $7,000 a month like my mother did. You can spend that money and put it onto your child's house, and the money stays in the family, the family stays together, and that investment stays with the family. And then that family can eventually, if they want to, they can have someone else move in, or they can, you know, rent that dwelling, as long as it's owner-occupied, which will never change. That's where we're at. That's the starting point of tonight. We're looking for some changes to make it easier for families to stay together, to correct some of the rules that we made originally, which were basically there to make sure it passed town meeting, because people are really nervous about it being two families, which it never did, because it's owner-occupied. So that's my little spiel. That's worth the history of it, the quick history, and then we can move forward.
Yeah, and I'll just briefly say, we went with LDS Consulting. Lynn Sweet was hired through the planning board's public benefit accounts. And we've asked Lynn to do an overview of the work she's done, and also then talk about the proposed changes. And Lynn's got a lot of experience working on the South Shore. I worked with Lynn in Duxbury, doing the housing production plan there. And so, we know that she's experienced in these issues. So with that, I turn it over to Lynn.
Okay, Lynn, welcome.
Thank you. Great town to meet everybody. Next time I come in, I'm gonna come in first then. So I'm gonna see if I can share a little presentation that I took together. It looks tiny to me. If I can.
There you go. That's working.
So that is weird, because I actually can't see it. But I can see it on my screen, not on yours. Can you see it?
Yes.
Great. So I'm here speaking with LDS Consulting group. We are based out of Waltham and it's been my pleasure to work with Valerie, Erin, and the building department, to take a look at your accessory dwelling unit bylaw. I think, just to set the stage, this is my cat Zoe who joins most soon. Sorry about that. Just to set the stage, currently, the bylaw is not necessarily bylaw, it's kind of a footnote to the dimensional requirements for the community. So I think before I get into the detail, I think one of the big changes.
Recording in progress.
We may record it. The big changes we're gonna do is actually make it be writ by law. So basically, under, if everyone agrees, the suggestion is to put a footnote under the dimensional table, or these table, and then actually put a writ by law into the zoning bylaw, just so that it's clear and it's the same for the nature of mine. So I'm gonna get into the presentation now. We spent a good amount of time researching, a whole lot of different ADU bylaws. We listened to the concerns that have been raised about the current bylaws since it came to an effect in 2019, and the requests that staff thought might be helpful. And so, then I'm just gonna go into sort of some general comparison of the bylaw to other communities. We have two study areas. We have a South Shore communities and sort of greater Boston communities. And then some recommendations for discussion. So I will say that this is gonna be a little bit of a slot, and if I'm going overtime, or if you want to interrupt me, please do, just because I can't see you. So we had a kickoff meeting, and as I mentioned, we looked at a whole bunch of reports on AUCAD, on school enrollment, on little and middle income models to create smaller housing units. I think one of the driving forces demographically, it's not in this report, but probably worth noting, and not gonna come as a surprise to anybody, is households' sizes are getting smaller. So we have the same number of people in our population, but we have more households, because there are maybe one or two children in a household instead of six or seven, and because a lot of our households are over age sixty-five, and at this point, they're two-person households. So there's a lot of focus in the state in general on trying to create smaller, sort of right-sized housing units for smaller-sized families. And that's what this MUPC study was all about. And we looked at a few other reports. And we actually read first of the bylaws for what we do in the South Shore communities, and the plastic effects from Marshfield, Nashville, Morwell, Denver, Clemence, and Situate. Clemence's bylaw is pending right now. And then we looked at some of the Greater Boston ones, just to sort of get a barometer, like how does, you know, Greater Boston differ from a short community, if you will? And we looked at a lot of different benchmarks, which I'm gonna go over now. And so, this is just a general comparison of the South Shore communities to Greater Boston, that the South Shore communities were about ten years behind, and getting adopted. And in reality, a lot of communities right now are, now that they have their bylaws in place, they're offering up amendments to tweak them, because as mentioned, there hasn't been this plethora of units added to communities that, in 2019, that seven units added. So I think people are getting more comfortable with it, that you're not gonna get seventy-five units in one year. Trying to make it easier, but also trying to make it clearer for staff when somebody comes in, so there's not ambiguity, and everyone's kind of rubbing in the municipality in the same direction. Most communities did not have affordability requirement. Those that allowed affordability had some requirements around that affordability. And then I just looked down, just so that you know, how many units have been created in different communities. Marshfield, you can see, is an outlier of eighty-five units, but I think that their bylaws have been in place for a while. And in the Greater Boston area, Lexington has some two-hundred units. Let me know. Can you still see this if I'm moving? Are you seeing it on the screen?
It's scrolling.
You can see it?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question here?
I just, I wanted to go to those communities to see when their bylaws were adopted. Yes, you can ask the question.
Yeah, I'm wondering, so the seven units in Kingston, I mean, I know there's been a lot more. Is that just since there's changes in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Correct.
Since the last change. Okay. So, because there's been a lot, there's been a real lot of them. There's been a lot of them, yeah. Okay, just.
And I was just gonna quickly look. So Marshfield's been in effect since the 1990s.
I think we were, what, nineties?
They created a lot of units, but they've been on the books for thirty years at this point.
I don't know, the in-law would still, would be different.
It's been in place since nineteen eighty.
Yeah, but we had eighty units.
I throw that out, just that those numbers are coming because they've been in effect long. And that's why I put the average units per year down at the bottom. And I think that that's really what is important to focus on, that there are not dozens of units in any community going online in every year.
Right.
So are there any more questions before I move on to the next slide?
No, I was just confused when I saw seven in Kingston, and I know there's been a lot more than that, but that's since the last change in the bylaw, I believe.
Yeah, that's since you've changed it to be calling it an ADU. And I believe that there are other people that have come in, that they didn't kind of fit into the box. So then, basically, my next slide, we're taking different pieces of the bylaws and suggesting changes. So the first column is proposed change. The next column is what Houston has in place today. And then the next column is an average of what we're seeing in South Shore communities, and an average of what we're seeing in Greater Boston. So basically, the other thing to keep in mind is that within the Housing Bond Bill that is being reviewed at the State House, in our legislature, there is tucked in there a mandatory accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So I stuck a note at the bottom, just so they can saw, this issue is a matter.
Excuse me, Lynn?
I'm a state man, babe. We don't know whether it will or not, we don't know how it'll change, that they're proposing that the maximum square footage be nine hundred square feet, or forty percent of the gross floor area, whichever is less.
Lynn, can you please switch to the PowerPoint presentation? Because what we're seeing is the spreadsheet.
Oh, that's what I had asked you. Okay. Sorry. I had, sorry, I had wanted to be able to read the spreadsheet to you.
Yeah.
Which is bad.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Oh, boy. Okay. So, going back. So basically, today, for minimum square footage, meaning the smallest size of accessory dwelling unit today in Kingston, is five hundred square feet plus one hundred square feet for each bedroom over one. So if it's a two-bedroom unit, the minimum would be six hundred square feet. It is unanimous across all South Shore communities that their minimum size unit is three hundred fifty square feet. In Greater Boston, the majority, five of the communities we looked at, had a minimum square footage of three fifty, and there were outliers with less, and some with more. So we have a couple of recommendations for the thing back. I don't know, we're not expecting the answer tonight, but this is trying to get some feedback for Valerie and for myself. So you can go with everybody else, swim in the same direction, and go with three fifty, or you can stick with what you have, or do something in between. And so that's for the minimum, meaning that nobody can come in the door and apply for an accessory dwelling unit permit if they don't have either three hundred and fifty square feet, if you choose option A, or as it stands today, five hundred square feet plus one hundred for each bedroom over one.
And I'll just interrupt here, if I can, just for a second, and say that I did talk this over with Paul Gallagher, no, Paul Armstrong. There's a lot of Pauls. To ask him why we would be at the five hundred plus one hundred rather than three fifty, because we went over this before. And his comment was that when we, we did have it as a smaller amount, but we were getting proposals that we didn't feel was enough room to really make an investment in the unit, and that the units that were coming in weren't that nice. And that the idea was that the five hundred plus, plus one hundred per bedroom was to get a more, a unit that had a little bit more room in it, that Kingston would find more desirable. But that's the only reason that there's a difference there, is the level of quality of the unit is something that's perceived by the building department when you change the square footage.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Interesting. Let's think about that a little bit, and see if.
Excuse me, one minute.
If there's something else that can be required.
Excuse me, one minute.
This is a simple subject, the building.
Hello?
Yep.
Hold on one minute, I have a board member that has a question.
Hi, Lynn, I was just curious. I don't understand why there has to be a minimum. I understand what Paul was saying, but why we couldn't just have a maximum or a percentage? Should we leave it at that?
I couldn't hear you. Can you say that again?
Yeah, do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's got a little issue with his voice, so he sings too much, as, not like you, you sing too little. He said that, why does there need to be a minimum? Why can't it just be a percentage for each unit?
Or a maximum, maximum or?
Or a maximum.
Well, I think here it needs to, on the maximum, we are suggesting a square footage and a percentage of the existing floor area.
I agree with that.
The maximum size. For the minimum, you know, I think kind of in line with what the building inspector's comments are, you don't want to go so small that it's not really habitable. You know, you need to have a bathroom in there, you need to have a kitchenette in there. You need, in the bedroom space, you need to have a window. So I would be concerned about going much smaller, because you still need to meet state building code requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
That answers the question. Because right now, you, you know, just to clarify, I think right now, you only allow attached units. So, you know, one of, I guess the suggestion is to potentially allow detached units.
I like that.
Maybe somebody convert, a carriage house, somebody can convert a garage.
So going with.
Is that another point of discussion?
Yeah, so going with the three fifty is, the idea of the zoning bylaw is adequate space, adequate light, adequate air. The idea is that it would be at least an adequate size for somebody to live there. You wouldn't want somebody to say, well, my closet's gonna be an ADU, because I can get, you know, an eight by, eight by ten in there. This is gonna be ten by twelve, or, or, it's gonna be big enough for a bed and a little bit more.
Yeah. Yeah, and most studios, I will say, sort of in the Greater Boston area, run between three hundred and fifty and five hundred square feet. So I think that's why those numbers are sort of popping up a little bit.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with a minimum. I have a problem with a maximum. I don't care, if someone has a small cape, you know, a twenty-four by twenty-four cape, I don't see why there's any reason the ADU can't be twenty-four by twenty-four. I don't see any downside to that. That's, that's one that I've looked at since the beginning with this, is I, I don't see the downside of that. And I don't know why most towns have this thing of a percentage of the, of the house, because in many cases, there might be smaller lots, which I would like to start allowing these on smaller lots, if it works, which is one of the problems with our bylaw now. And if they're the same size, who cares?
I think, I think the issue is really related to terminology in zoning, that it has to be an accessory to the principal structure. It can't be the same size, because then it becomes two dwellings.
Right. So, so the addition is the dwelling, and the old part's the accessory.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
I do.
So, an older gentleman, his wife's passed away, and lives in a little house, he wants his kids to move in, with his son and a daughter and two kids, they put in a bigger addition. Now his house is the accessory. That's just the way I look at it, it's like, why, I just want to open this up to make it really open to people.
Yeah, I mean, I think that when we looked at, again, at the other communities, they allowed a little bit more square footage in some of the, kind of the Metro West communities. And on the South Shore, the most they allowed was that the accessory dwelling unit be fifty-eight percent of the size of the primary. So I think that what might limit what you're talking about is when we get into the rest of the dimensional requirements, like setbacks and height.
Okay.
So in theory, you might be able to build a second house, but in reality, when you count in the rest of the dimensional requirements, it's probably not feasible. So can we revisit this? Can we get through everything?
Yeah, that's just.
Yes, let's keep, keep moving forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So design requirements were pretty standard amongst all of the different communities, which is, you know, right now, Houston is requiring that, that everything be in the rear of the building. And so we believe that that's a limiting factor. And so we really suggested keeping the same sentiment, which is that your accessory dwelling unit needs to fit in with the neighborhood, it needs to fit in with the existing building, it needs to keep with the architectural character of the primary dwelling unit. But if somebody wants to put the unit on the side, they should have the opportunity to do that. So that's really the only difference between what we have today and what we're suggesting for tomorrow.
Today, we, we say that the, the stairways and exits would have to be to the rear of the building, not the side.
That was, that was just one of those things to make passable.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I think that needs to go away.
Okay, that's what we're suggesting.
Anybody else have anything on that? Any reason for keeping it?
No.
No? Everybody says no?
Okay. Excellent. One down. So then we took a look at the dimensional requirements. And in most instances, we suggested that what we have today is what's in effect, which is that, you know, for the front setback, fifteen, thirty feet, for the rear five, and for the side, ten. Where, and again, with the other communities, you can see that, that they were arranged. And it really, in most instances, ties back to what the underlying zoning district calls for. So where we heard concern was, well, if you're suggesting that you do a detached unit, and it's five feet from the lot line, and you build it two and a half stories, it's gonna loom over a neighbor's property, and that's probably gonna be a non-starter. So what we are suggesting is that the height be tied to the underlying zoning, that's one way of approaching it. The other way of approaching it is if it is an existing unit, perhaps it's just whatever the height it is. So if you have a one-story garage, or one and a half-story garage, you can't go any higher, if you're very close to a lot line. So this is one that I think needs a little bit of nuance and a little bit of thought to try and find what that, what is, what is, that is gonna, you know, is gonna work.
Yeah, this one takes a lot of thought, honestly, in my opinion.
But I think it doesn't, I don't think it comes down to the setbacks, I think it comes down to the height, height question. I don't know if you agree with what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, we have Rocky Nook, which is, you know, everything's getting taller, bigger and taller. That's something we're gonna have to have a hard look at. That'll probably be the hottest part of the changes, in my opinion.
And, and part of it is whether you decide you want to do tech building detached at all. So I don't really think I properly, you know, spelled that out here, but I think, you know, so, I think our questions are gonna come up more around detached, which is, do you want to do detached? And so, how are you gonna handle height, when you're close to a lot?
Right, so.
And just kind of follow up of sort of any points.
I mean, you know, a lot of our lots in this town, they're, they might be like, we have our twenty, we have our forty, and we have our eighty.
Yeah.
And a lot of the lots that are in our forty zones don't meet any of the setbacks, they don't meet any of the spatial requirements, they don't meet the road furniture requirements. And so what do we, the big question we have, and the, and our building department has had, is what do we do with those?
So in, what we've, that's not listed here, but what we're basically saying is we would eliminate the minimum lot size and the frontage, so that, and then you're, you're just looking at, do you have the area on the lot to, to do this, which is a big change, because right now, we currently limit it to twenty thousand square feet or larger. And the idea here would be that we could get to those smaller lots that you're talking about. And then that's where we started to get into this discussion on massing near the lot line. And the idea of a detached unit, or even a attached unit, has come up with quite a few people, who've come in and said, I really need to do this, to keep my family together, like you talked about. But I can't afford to buy new, because the median house price here in Kingston is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now. So the idea of trying to.
Which is absurd.
Yeah. So the idea of trying to do some sort of a conversion of an older house, where they might have a leased apartment, that if they can get a separate entrance, then it could become an ADU. Or if they're able to put something like, over the garage out back, it's detached. And we have had one or two where it just fit, because the lot was big enough, and they did go ahead and convert, and the family, like you described, Tom, they moved from the main house, moved into the apartment they built over the garage, and then the family, the daughter and the children were able to move into the main house. And that was, that, we've had that happen here, where the lot was big enough to do that. So the ability to have more flexibility for other people who need to do that is, is the idea.
Right. And that's a concern, because we've had people that never came to this board, because they didn't make it this far, because their house was in our forty, and it didn't meet the requirements, or in our twenty, for that matter, or, or anything, for that.
Well, and so the other thing, the other thing that.
If it's in our forty, it doesn't meet it.
Well, in other words, it doesn't have, but.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, so what, what we're talking about, what, what Tom is saying, we're, we're trying to separate a conforming lot from a non-conforming lot, just, it.
Yeah, so we, yeah, and I sort of, I talk about lot coverage in part in the next slide, but basically, I kind of want to go back and then saying, this is what we're suggesting for detached, meaning if you're doing an addition, keep what you have for front, rear, and side, and for height, deal with, you know, the underlying zoning.
And what Lynn is saying is that that's regardless of the lot size.
But I think you should provide the underlying zoning regardless of the lots.
And for a detached unit, we're basically.
That's what she's saying.
For a detached, if you're gonna add a new unit, that is what setbacks are in
the zone today, the current setbacks. So the existing house would be pre-existing, non-conforming, potentially, but if you're gonna add another unit, you need to comply with front, rear, and side setbacks, and be limited the height of, again, the new building to, we're suggesting, two stories or thirty feet height.
So that makes sense, so.
So we're sort of differentiating between attached and detached.
So you have a house that's on a lot.
And a lot of them are detached.
And the, and the house is two, doesn't meet the setbacks over an hour forty, let's say, but the addition, or the ADU would have to meet those setbacks?
If you're adding another unit versus adding.
That makes sense.
Well, she's saying if you're adding a detached unit. If you have, so, so the point, so detached means it's a separate unit, a separate building. If, if it's attached, your house may already be, like if you're in Rocky Nook, you're already on a non-conforming lot. So the, the underlying zoning is the old zoning. So the, the underlying zoning is the old zoning, which is what we're calling out here, this, this fifteen, five, and ten, that's the old zoning. And the idea there is if you have a structure, it's already gonna be, um, most likely using those old setbacks. So if we were to say, like, it has to only be current, today's setbacks, that would eliminate all those lots.
Right, which has been a problem. So my point in bringing that up was that we, I, to my knowledge, since I've been on this for like twenty-nine years, we've given every one of these that was possible, one person had to reapply, um, with some changes, or all the others. The only ones that didn't make it are the ones that ever made it this far, because of non-conforming houses or non-conforming lots. They didn't meet the criteria, and their engineer said, yeah, you don't, you don't meet the criteria. So they didn't ever come to us. Those are the ones we want, we want to fix.
So what we're saying is it would be the underlying zoning at the time the house was built, if it's attached. So if it's attached, and it was built, you know, in the seventies, and now it was, at, at the time, it was a twenty thousand square foot lot, and that was fine. But now we've changed the zoning to forty thousand square feet. Um, or, you know, you could take Rocky Nook, where there weren't any minimum lot sizes, um, at the time, I think it was five thousand, just state law. And people picked up whatever, a couple of lots and built houses there. Um, now you're saying that, okay, we're gonna be able to probably not fit a new detached unit, because we'd have to meet today's setbacks. But if you're trying to build attached, you can use the setbacks that were in ti- at, in place at the time of the existing zoning, when the house was built.
No matter when it was built?
When it was built, right.
I mean, no matter when it was built.
Right, the zoning would have been, whatever was in place when the house was built, not today's zoning. Because we've changed the zoning for a lot of those areas.
And, I mean, just to clarify again, for, for adding on to a house, we, we, we have the setbacks that are currently in the bylaw. Um, the only thing that we're suggesting that you do for height is that the height of the addition to an existing home tied to the zoning that was in effect at the time. We're assuming an existing home with regard to, again, sort of, if you scroll back and go to maximum lot coverage. Um, you know, right now, we're basically saying that, um, the existing home may be pre-existing, non-conformant. Um, and if you want to add on to that house, um, that you're not occupying over twenty-five percent of the total lot area. So that way, you're not, does that make sense?
Any questions?
So the house occupied fifty percent of the lot, the ADU, another twenty-five, you have twenty-five percent open space, essentially.
Okay.
So, so again, sort of, um, maximum lot coverage is, is similar to what you have today. You're silent on maximum lot coverage, so I just took what was out of the zoning bylaw today. Um, and then we're, we're making a suggestion, um, that, that we accessory dwelling, not occupy over twenty-five percent of the lot. And sort of, again, kind of going back on the detached, we're basically saying that if you're, you comply with what, what's happening today, and we have some micromoment. I hope I haven't confused everybody.
No, I think we're doing pretty good.
Okay, so parking, um, today, you require that at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom or accessory unit, and a converted portion of the structure, which space will not be provided in the front or side yard. So we are sticking with one parking space for each unit, um, and taking out the language, parking space needs to be, the parking space probably previously was prohibited in the front of the side yard, and you would have to put parking space in the back. We see that as a limiting factor, um, so we're really suggesting just that those limitations be removed, but that you could put a car in the front or on the side of the house.
That's great.
Yeah, and then, um, the other sort of suggestion is that, and, and, and so we're basically saying, one parking space for each unit. Um, it, the other suggestion is to go to the nine, section nine point two of the off-street parking requirements, and that has a higher level of parking requirement. So in my opinion, that seems to be more restrictive, um, but, um, that was suggest, you know, that was a suggestion. Um, most people, um, you know, most of the greater Boston ones are in transit-oriented locations, so they may not require off-street parking. Um, all of the South Shore communities require one off-street parking space. I would be surprised, I mean, these units are really in the studio with one-bedroom units. I think having a two-bedroom unit is going to be the exception, for what we've been talking about, which is that lot sizes are small. Um, so, um, you know, I think one parking space for each bedroom, you know, makes sense for, for, for new units. So that's something you can think about.
Yeah, and I did-
About the off-street parking requirements.
I did go over this with Paul Armstrong again this morning, and he's also fine with the, the one space per, per each new bedroom, the way we've got it now, which is, like, like Lynn said, it's not as restrictive as the, the, uh, other parking standards. So it gives some flexibility.
Okay, so we, we might get rid of B.
We might get rid of B.
We might get rid of B, oops, sorry. My mask is being very sensitive. Of occupancy, um, so right now, you have occupancy, um, by the owner of the property, or by realty trust, or corporation, or beneficiary, or shareholder, a lot of different, um, you know, iterations. Um, um, most, um, communities are very simple, they're basically saying, an owner must occupy either the existing dwelling unit or the new accessory dwelling unit. So I think that where, um, and I just added an exception with temporary absence, if like, somebody is, you know, out of the country or something like that, or the, whatever, their kid had baby, they're gonna go, you know, live with the kid for a month or something like that. Um, I just added a little bit of an exception as I started reading through the bylaws. Um, but, you know, we believe that, that there may be an opportunity where the owner is a smaller family size, and they may want to live in, in the eighteen, eighteen unit, and then rent out the, the house. Or have, uh, you know, a, whatever, another family have to live in the house.
Right.
So, the only, the only difference here is, which just seems to be a lot of sort of investor-type language in the old, old bylaw, and since no one else is using that, we figured it could be a win by taking, by, by taking that out. Because, you know, there's concern that someone's gonna come in, speculate in, and all of a sudden, you just can have a bunch of investor-owned properties.
Right, we have to keep the owner occupied no matter what.
Yep.
Okay.
Does anybody agree with that?
Absolutely.
That's the only reason it ever passed in this town.
Yeah.
And that would have passed.
Yeah, it is interesting that it happened in my neighborhood now.
Yeah.
So, so the other matters that I looked really closely at, um, I kind of put in the body, term rental is prohibited. You don't want to add, end up with an Airbnb, you know, kind of a thing. Um, so perhaps adding a minimum rental term of thirty days, um, perhaps adding a maximum of two bedrooms in a unit. Um, and then documenting it, which I think right now, your bylaw, or your, you know, what's written in your code right now is a little stagnant on it. Um, so we just want to make sure that the special permit is granted by the planning board, that it's recorded, and registered deeds, and that the building department issues an occupancy, um, occupancy permit, that a building and occupancy permit are issued. Um, so that's just kind of documentation, just being very clear. And then, um, we found that the more successful communities are requiring reporting. And, um, since, um, it goes through Valerie's office, we, we, our suggestion is to put that on her shoulders. Um, and, and it's, and it sort of has to do with that underlying threat, which is, if you don't report every year, you could lose your special permit, could, could go away. Or you could be in violation of, you know, whatever the building code you're applying. Um, so we have suggested that the owners recertify their ADU every January one, or they transfer the property to a new owner, and that the planning department will send out reminders in December, you know, over a three-month period, saying, you know, are you there, you know, give us proof that you're, you know, the owner is living there. Um, and, um, you know, and if, even if it doesn't happen, then you can start finding them or invoking their special permit. And I think this is important, because when you're going to town meeting, you're gonna show that you're in the driver's seat, you're not gonna allow any fraud, you're gonna enforce this owner occupancy requirement. So that's the reason that I'm suggesting that, even though it might be a little bit more work. But, you know, you've got seven units today, maybe it's not, you know, a lot ahead of you, if you're adding three or four units in here, if I could imagine.
Yeah, then, and again, I'll just add that Paul Armstrong is suggesting that we eliminate the dollar amount, and just say subject to fines, or the possibility of losing a special permit. Um, but I, we agree that either the building department or the planning department could mail those letters out. Say, we know we have seven units where we're looking for owner occupancy every year.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Who would chase them down, and who would have to enforce that, and what?
Um, and then the other thing too, I think, I think Lynn, you, when you say the, the minimum rental term, I think you mean maximum rental term is thirty days?
No, she doesn't want-
No, it's the minimum.
Oh, 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 I get you.
You know, overnight rental, like, inherently, it'd be-
But I feel like Rocky Nook especially has lots of weekly seasonal rentals.
Our beach cottage community, so-
That makes sense.
Yeah, in my neighborhood too.
To, so this, to me, was more of not wanting to have it be a, um,
Yeah, so-
Airbnb.
At, like, weekly or nine days.
Yeah, I'd rather have it longer.
Yeah, that makes sense, I just wanted to check.
Six months.
So that's why the, I, I put in the minimum-
Yeah, you want to say, or at least ninety days, so-
Is this just for new, for new ones though?
I mean, you don't want, you don't want ADUs become Airbnbs.
New.
New ones.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, if you're a short community, maybe a month is too short a term.
Registered.
So maybe we do want to make it forty-five days, you know, I don't think renting places for two months over the summer, something, something like that. So, so think about that.
Okay.
You know, what might want that minimum rental period today?
We'll take a look at that.
Well, that's why it says the minimum is thirty days.
Yeah, so it might be that we want to increase that recommendation, and, like, like Lynn said, we're not trying to finish tonight, but we are trying to bring these talking points up. And then we'll talk about it again on the twenty-fifth. We want to reserve a warrant article, the warrant closes on the twenty-sixth, but we still have time after that to kind of nail down the details. Okay, um, and Lynn, if I can add one more thing, that I, I don't think made the chart, because the, the, um, it's not something that we're debating, it's just that, um, one, one other clause in our existing bylaw has to do with how long the house has been occupied by, it's, it's not clear, whether it's the current owner or someone else's owner that maybe just bought the house. Um, it's, it's unclear, but it says in certain districts, it has to be one year, and other districts has to be two years before you can consider it. And I, I, I think that what the message I was getting is to eliminate that now, because most, we're mostly built out, but even if we weren't, um, new construction is gonna be a lot cheaper to do it all at once, if it's new construction. And we do have people looking to move to a town where they can build an ADU for that reason. And I, I know some people here in this community have done just that, they've moved here, they see that there's a possibility that the ADU bylaw might become more flexible, and they're hoping that they'll be able to build that, uh, addition for their parents.
I think that should go away, and I think we've had this discussion before. No minimum, no minimum, so it could be a brand-new house with an ADU. Does everybody agree with that?
When Marshfield first did this-
It's also part of the lease statute, um-
They said one year, it, it couldn't be new construction. Some people were putting in-laws over garages, or built kitchen, and then after they went down, they were coming back and throwing the kitchen in.
Yeah.
She didn't have to go through that.
Well, I shouldn't have to go through that, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, I think that all those requirements should go away. Everybody seems to be agreeing with that.
I agree with that. I think when we talked about it, we talked about it going away.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, well, our focus has been on where, what, the discussion points, so I think this is fine.
So I can, you know, so it's, because the next step, I can sort of make the tweaks that we talked about tonight, add that, and it's being eliminated. Or I can actually, and, I guess I can just and/or, I can also write the language for a potential bylaw, um, if you want, so that, to sort of get ahead of you with the warrant.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then, I mean, we had talked about trying to sort of do visuals, and I, and I don't, I think that that's more when you get to town meeting.
Yeah.
Like, what would a three-hundred-and-fifty square foot additional property have next?
That's great, I, I think waiting a little bit on the, on the visuals and focusing on, uh, drafting some language for us would be really good.
Yeah, and obviously, if you have feedback, um, after tonight's meeting, send it to Valerie, or, or send it to me. Um, I think that, um, it's, these are not huge tweaks, they're more about clarifying it. Um, you know, there's a couple, you know, little tweaks about, you know, whatever, the parking, you know, that seems to be a no-op here, the owner occupancy. There, I, I, I think there's a couple of things in there that are probably gonna be cause for discussion, and I think, I think the idea of adding detached units is, is, you know, at some point, someone's gotta make a decision. Is that gonna be so disruptive to the discussion that this year, you just want to do, you know, sort of these tweaks, and maybe that's something you decide for next year. But that's really something you need to kind of decide on your own, as to how much you want to bite, you know, bite off. But a lot of it is really clarification, which will make it easier for the applicant, and easier for you as a board to review.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right.
Great start.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I think drafting the bylaw thing would be the best option, that we could critique that.
Okay, and so you're meeting again on the twenty-fifth?
Everybody agree with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, all right, sounds good, I'm sure Valerie and I will judge based before then.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
That was awesome, great, thank you.
Have a good night.
So, at least begin the second item.
Okay. Request from O'Donnell Family Trust to move money held in Ash Grove for the decommissioning of the wind turbines. Um, in case you're wondering why we have things at seven oh one, seven oh three, seven oh four, seven oh five, seven oh six, many times, things get canceled, like, for instance, our second thing on the agenda was a lot release that has gone away. So if three people don't show up, and we have something scheduled for like seven forty, now we have a problem, we're gonna sit here until seven forty. So we schedule them back-to-back, in case you're thinking we're insane, okay? Go ahead, sir.
We're on. Tyler Duggan.
Is the green light on?
Yes, Tyler Duggan, representing forty-eight Marion Drive. Um, as Mr. Bouchard said, we'd like to take back the annual payments for our turbines and decommissioning. We do want- We do understand why it's worrisome if we were to just get up and abandon those turbines. However, we want you to know, we can't do anything we want to do with that land with those turbines there. We have approximately five years left with those turbines, at which point we will decommission them. However, I have brought today two options, which I think are fair to both town and my company. Can I pass these out?
Sure.
It's like frozen. Thank you.
So, head of view is Mountain One Bank. We would like to put the full amount, 346,000. I know there's a typo that says 360,000. And right away, we have a good relationship with the bank, we've used them for years now. On top of that, we give you statements, numbers, whatever you request, so you know that we're putting the money into account. Second option. Is there any questions for that?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Second option and more preferred option.
If I can just step up and let you know that the, the public is seeing the meeting. So the free.
It's frozen, so they're not in there?
The, the public, the public is watching us on TV and the, the screen is frozen, but everybody can see and hear what we're doing.
Oh, they can still see?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all right, that's cool.
Second option would be an account with Enkora, interest-bearing. I believe Mr. Hickey sent my uncle what we were getting, 2% interest on the account you guys have now. With this, we'd get five to six, so obviously that helps us out a little. Top of that, we'd get statements. I don't believe we've been sent any statements yet for, since 2020, I think we've been doing these payments, so that would help us out, of course. And if you look at Section 3, role of the client, you'll see that we need to meet the agreements of those annual turbine payments. And of course, just like the first option, we give you guys statements, numbers, whatever you request. Is there any questions on those two options?
Yeah, I'm not through reading it yet.
Take your job.
Val or anybody?
This is a highly unusual request and we don't recommend supporting it.
I mean, that's my initial thought, but I think that we should. Let me, let me listen to board members. This is, no one's ever asked us anything like this before, so it's new.
Has there ever been a situation like this with turbines?
The town holds many, many different accounts in Ash Grove and it, no one has ever asked to take the money back and try to earn better interest on it, ever.
Well, of course, if you actually know, that's all right, I figured we'd ask.
Yeah, no, turbines enough.
Yeah. And we understand with the town's turbines on the landfill, I mean, I was up our turbine, I saw it being decommissioned, it's definitely not an easy process. But, I mean, we can't leave those turbines up. We literally couldn't do anything with the land. And you know my grandmother, most of you, she's got ideas, plans that she wants to fulfill. These turbines have at most maybe five, six years left.
Right, well, there's not much incentive for us to do this. We'll have to look into it. If we're going to do anything, Bob's right, we'll have to have the town council look at it.
I understand.
And Valerie's correct, we have, over the years, hundreds and hundreds of accounts similar to this.
I see.
And not a decommissioning of a turbine, but the finishing of roads, the maintenance of, of different things, on and on and on and on it goes. And we're constantly monitoring those accounts, giving money back when things are finished. All those type of things happen all the time. It's always been that way, all the way through. So you're not unique in this, except for the fact that it's a wind turbine, am I correct?
Yes.
So, but no one has ever asked us for the money we're holding to make interest on it.
We're a unique family, sir.
But you could be the first one, there's no problem with asking.
Yeah, no, exactly.
You don't ask, you never get.
We'd also like to talk about statements, we.
I was just going to say, I can help facilitate that, I think with.
It's been four years now, we haven't received a single statement. To my knowledge, and my grandmother, she's.
We will coordinate with the treasurer's office, that's not something the planning board manages, but we'll ask them to send you statements.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes. Anybody have more comments, questions?
2%, I believe.
Our, our goal is to keep it as safe as possible in case we need it, rather than any, any kind of risky or different investment, which might be a higher return. It's not our goal to make money on the, it's, our, our goal is to hold it in case something needs to be done.
Agreed, agreed. We'll, we'll look into it.
I appreciate that, yeah.
If we're going to discuss it in a further meeting, we will notify you.
Yeah, I believe she has made one, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Will do. That was the father, right?
That was.
Okay. Site application, 56 Main Street, Michael Coward, or Coward, however it's pronounced, Motor World's Power Sports. Introduce yourself.
How you doing? I'm Joe Webby from Webby Engineering. I'm here with Mike Coward from Motor Work, Motor World, Motor Power Sports. We're at the site at 56 Main Street in Kingston.
Did you say Joe Webby of Webby Engineering?
Yeah, Joe Webby III, excuse me.
Oh.
You're not Joe Webby.
I was going to say, you look way different.
Yeah, good vitamins.
Good to see you, Joe Webby III.
You're going in the right direction.
Do we, do we have the ability to put that, that up there, the plan? Oh, we don't, okay. Well, you all have it in front of you anyway, so we get the site there at, at 56 Main Street. It's an existing site. We have an existing paved parking in the front. We have existing gravel parking in the back. We have enough parking spaces on-site for the, the square footage of buildings that are indicated there. Mr. Coward would like to change the use of the property from, from what it is now to basically sells their, like, high-performance golf cart type of, type of vehicles. He has a, an existing business now in, in Taunton. And this is kind of like a, he wants to kind of expand into this market over here and, and see, you know, how, how he does. So we're proposing some screening around the site. But again, we're basically just utilizing, you know, the existing parking, the existing building. You know, I, I, towards the end of the day, today, I did receive the comments from, from staff. There's some concerns about, you know, getting fire trucks through there and things of that nature. You know, I, I believe that, that if we could sit down and do a, you know, a turning radius diagram, that we could probably with a 20-foot radius fit the, the fire trucks to go through the, the site if, if we have to. You know, obviously, the site's been there for quite a many, quite a few years. You know, and there haven't been any, any problems that we're, you know, aware of as far as, you know, getting vehicles in and out of there or, you know, anything of that, that nature. You know, again, we're just, really just trying to, to utilize the, the existing site the way that it is, you know, and, and take it from there.
I'm still trying to picture where it is.
It's right on the corner of Crescent Street. There used to be a business.
Oh, on the other side.
Just past the Rocky Nook opening.
Just beyond Rocky Nook, and there's a cabinet guy in there.
Right here.
Yep.
And then the, the Finnish guys from, local Finnish guys, they had this back shop.
Yeah, Adam kicked him up. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so, let me see this, you see this here?
Yeah, I see it now.
Here's what Crescent goes up, it's right, right there.
Yep.
Yep. So can you, can someone tell us what kind of work is done in there?
You need to approach the microphone, please.
Can I go up to the mic and identify yourself?
Hello? Yes, I am Michael Coward. I'm the owner of Motor World Power Sports, and I'll give you an explanation of what we do for business. So we are a power sports dealer and a recreational vehicle dealer. So we mostly deal with golf carts as our main bread and butter, but we touch upon other vehicles such as, as I could explain to you, an electric dirt bike or gas dirt bikes of all natures, but more the new market. They're called star vehicles. So it's on the new market. We do a lot of business in the South Shore already, so we'd like to come close to our clients. We are based out of Taunton, Massachusetts right now, but we do a lot within Norwell, Duxbury, Plymouth, so we'd like to come closer to you guys.
So where's your closest location?
Taun, Massachusetts.
Taun.
Would this be similar? Would this be a similar setup?
Yes. Uh, no, we want to bring more on now. So Evolution's another brand we're going to bring on, Evolution Electric Vehicles. So they're a street legal golf cart.
So you'd be storing vehicles and stuff outside and all that?
Yes, under a display.
Is there any?
They're, they're drawn on the site plan.
I see this here, but I don't see.
Do you see these little rectangles with Xs through them?
Oh, oh, yeah.
So there's eight proposed wrapped around.
So that'd be in front of the other building?
In front of the first building, and then two proposed in the driveway towards the front.
Is it primarily rentals or for sale and service?
Sale and service, some rental use.
So using the whole facility? Or just the back building?
The front building on the first floor and then the garage space at the back.
Excuse me, you, if you're going to adjust the board, please be at the microphone, that's all.
Adam Harrington, sorry.
Are you the owner of the building?
Yes, Jacob Barnes and I are the owners of 56 Main Street. And Mike would like to use the front building on the lower level as his showroom of speed, of sorts, and then use the garage space out back for repairs, et cetera.
Now, the first floor in the, in the front building is just an office space now.
It's just, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it won't be showroom meaning pictures?
No, he's, my wife.
Smaller vehicles, parts, accessories, things of that nature.
How do you get them in there?
So for instance, like, a lot of them are just shaped like a bicycle. They're not too heavy, they're very small, you can just walk right in through the door.
Oh, really, okay.
So that's the whole point.
I'm more curious than anything.
Yeah.
But not gasoline in there?
No, just electric vehicles.
Electric, do, do you do gasoline?
We do deal with gasoline vehicles, but for our new vehicles we sell, they're mostly all electric. We don't deal with too much gas. We have gas as well, though, so I want you to know that.
Go ahead, guys, anybody has questions? Val, can you talk about the repair of gasoline vehicles in this zone and all this?
Well, you know, in talking with Jason about what's allowed and what isn't allowed, they need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for the proposed use in this zone. So this is both a site plan review and a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals regarding the use. As far as we know, there's no special treatment of, or information about the storage of, of anything. It's, I think it's a slab foundation, am I correct?
Yes.
So there's no potential for leakage from the garage that we know of in terms of the containment. I think that would be something the fire department might want to look at, but there's no proposed changes, it's an existing.
I mean, most people who have a garage door, which that does, I believe.
Yep.
And they work on gas vehicles, they have to deal with a gas trap of some sort or some kind of containment type of thing. So.
So, yeah, we had asked the applicant to do the turning radius before filing with the, the town.
For the, for the zoning?
Sitting down with the fire department, yeah, for the site plan and for the zoning. But, so Adam, I talked to Adam Hatch, who wants to review the site plan. Even, he's familiar with the structure and everything, but he needs to know more because we have larger apparatus than when this was built. And he wants to, you know, we, we just want to make sure that anything that would have to do with hazardous materials or access is, is adequately addressed before we were to.
There's certainly encroachment of trees, I can see that from the picture, for fire trucks.
Well, the driveway itself is, according to the plan, it's adequate for one-way circulation, except for when you're coming in on the entry drive, there's a 16-foot wide pavement with a retaining wall to one side. So there's some concern, just coming in on that main side, but it looks like they've shown it as lawn. So there's probably no obstruction until you get to that shed and the possibility when you get onto the gravel that, we want to make sure any display vehicles are not in the way of a truck. So I had called out, these won't be striped. They have adequate parking spaces, if you will. And the, the vehicles that would be for sale are going to be much smaller than a typical parking space. But we want to make sure that whatever would, that fire truck would need to come all the way around, that whatever storage area would be, being used for these vehicles is adequate for the fire department to get around. So we'll have to work through that some more because we don't have that information tonight.
So we'll get a letter from the fire department?
Well, not until we get a turning radius and, and the information that the fire department needs to do a review.
Yeah, we got to find out about this containment of fuel, if there's a spill. We got to look into that.
Can I add something about that? And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any, going to be any kind of extraordinary use of gasoline there. It's, I mean, we have a wood shop there now, you know, we have gas stored in there for chainsaws and, and stuff like that. I, I mean, is it going to be any more than?
I'll go along with what he's saying. It's no more than a typical residential house would have, just like, kind of a typical one-gallon gas tanks on the side of things. It's not any type of crazy gas use. Like I said, a typical residential.
I know, there's just laws about commercial, using a property commercially and having a garage door where vehicles can be, come in to where he worked on. That's, I'm, I'm a plumber, so I happen to know those laws. I'm a plumber inspector. So it's just something that has to be at least considered to look, looked at. Maybe it doesn't matter, maybe it doesn't, maybe it does not, maybe it's not part of this application, but.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is this a consideration from this board or would that be more of a zoning board appeals type of thing, a special permit?
Well, that's, that was my next thing, is, you know, do we look, look at the site plan and say, yeah, it's great? And then if we have comments, we pass them on to the zoning of concerns? If we have concerns, or what do we do? I'm going to leave it up to you guys and Val too, even though she's not a voting member.
No.
But she's smarter than the rest of us.
No.
So is Aaron, actually.
Aaron is definitely smarter than all of us combined. I think that, I think the only other real, I mean, of concerns, the only other concern is the same out front. The idea that there'd be two parked vehicles there when the one-way, excuse me, the one-way drive is fifteen feet. But that is, is very, very tight when you look at fifteen feet to a s- a, a display vehicle for a fire truck to make that turn. So, I'm not, I'm not supporting that the two display vehicles be placed out front like they're showing in the, in the parking lot.
On the corner?
Yeah.
Well.
But again, we don't have the information we need from the fire department to make a determination.
Right.
Didn't you, wasn't the other mention, Val, of something about the, uh, the shed on there? As far as making that swing with the fire truck? I mean, it looks to me, I've, I've been out to that site, it, it, there's a fair amount of room, but I know that one spot is, is a little tight there.
That's what it is.
Do we have, yeah, do we have room to move that?
Uh, well, that, that, that's a pre-existing non-conforming structure there. It's on a foundation. It's been there for.
Is it on a foundation?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that building. It's cool.
It used to be, uh, there used to be little, um, like motels back, like, where, there used to be like a, an inn back in the day, so.
So, a question. So, first floor of the front building, first floor of the second building. What's going on with the second floor of each other building?
The second floor of the rear building is, um, our office and, and another office, uh, for a plaster. And then the second floor on the first building is just kind of like a conference room.
So, Val, I didn't, I never, I read through almost everything. I never finished the reading of this particular thing.
Yeah.
Is that accounted for in their application?
Yeah, the conference room is counted as part of the office space towards the parking, so that's fine. And they, they are claiming that they'll use both the second and first floor of the front on the plan that was submitted, and then the, the se- the first floor of the second building.
Okay.
So, there's adequate parking.
For everything?
For everything.
That's, that was my question.
It's, yeah. So, it's really just more about the display vehicles. The other question I had on the plans, which isn't clear, is, um, we have, and, and maybe you can elaborate on this a little bit. It just shows proposed fence on the gravel parking on either side, but it doesn't detail whether it's a, um, a chain link fence or a screening fence, um, or, you know, what kind of fence that might be. There's no scre- um, there are some existing trees, there's lawn, but there's no additional screening proposed along any of the pavement.
We have a picture of the existing screening, uh, and of their natural screening. I mean, I, we do have the, we do have that dr- I don't know if this helps. This is along the side.
Are these all the same?
No. The other thing about that, about the screening there is the, the neighboring lots are, there's a berm on both sides.
Just gonna speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. Uh, the neighboring lots, there, there's a, basically like a berm on both sides. So, if we put a, a five or six-foot fence there, the neighbors can see over the top of it anyway. So, I don't, I don't know that, that it would be necessary to do that. I think they get more screening out of the, out of the bushes and, and trees and, that are existing. We were talking about the possibility of making like a corral or something like that for the, the carts to be in that were not gonna be on display. And every, and all the, and all the vehicles that are gonna be worked on will be in the, in the shop anyways. It's not like there's gonna be anything being worked on in the parking lot or anything like that. And as you can see by the picture.
Does that parking lot exist now?
Yeah.
It's gravel in the back and paved in the front.
So, everything that's shown on the plan exists?
Yeah.
It's been like that since we bought the building and.
Everything exists.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen, sorry.
There's the retaining wall that wraps around the front house on three sides. There's pavement that runs, um, partway back to the, um, retaining wall on one side, and then it goes further back to just behind the shed or the storage garage near the, uh, back of the second house. But then the remainder part in the back is gravel.
Okay, um, so, were you the owners that put the ad, the building out back?
Yeah, we bought them.
Yeah, the, uh, foundation was, was onsite. We put the building on the foundation.
Okay. I remember when that was a bunch of rental shacks.
Yeah.
When I was a kid.
Mm-hmm.
There were so many of those little places around town.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, the previous owner tore them down.
Yeah, they had them at the end of May Ave.
Mm-hmm.
We had them here. We had them with it, with that condo project is off Crescent Street up on the hill that sees the ocean. That was all shacks. It's unbelievable. All rental little spaces. Mo- back then, they were just short-term rental people coming to Plymouth or whatever. All right, do you wanna see these other ones? This one here? Yes. There is some, some screening there. Certainly, there is in the summer. And the fact that it exists, it makes me inclined to think it's... Okay, the way it is, we're even. Any thoughts?
Without having a real visual of what they're gonna do, we have, um, well, this is gonna go to the ZBA, so we really wouldn't. It's not a special permit for us, right?
Right. Uh, correct. You're looking at the site plan to make sure it's adequate. We've called out that there's no lighting shown, so there's no lighting approved by this board. You know, it would have to come back to the board for, for conditions. There's no landscaping shown, so I was recommending that they put some landscaping in. Um, it, it's grass right now in the front. The sign is in the street layout, so the possibility of moving the sign out of the street layout and doing some landscaping up front was, uh, something that I recommended the board consider.
Could we recommend to the board of appeals, I don't know what your neighbors like?
We've never had a complaint from the neighbors at all. We had one complaint when we moved in, 'cause we had our landscaper come in at like seven, seven-thirty or something like that, and they just asked us to come later, so that was, and he, he did, so that's the only complaint we've ever had.
Yeah, but if you're gonna be servicing and testing electric and potentially gas-powered vehicles.
Well, we have now, uh, you know, as, as, as we said, there was a wood shop before, so they have the planers and saw, and table saws ripping, you know, all, all day long. So, uh, doors been open. We've never had a complaint. I mean, they have the sign shop in the back and ideal irrigation and all that stuff surrounding them, too. So, uh, I mean, I don't think it's any, anything more than what's already, you know, there's not gonna be any more disturbance.
I'm sure your work hours are gonna be nine to five or something like that.
Yeah, correct.
You gonna put ventilation and things like that for working on gas vehicles?
Uh, we don't, we don't know. Yeah.
We don't have any plans for that right now, but that'll be a question for Mike.
Yeah, that's a question for Mike.
So, like I said, we don't typically touch on gas vehicles too much, and a lot of it is, when we work on gas vehicles, there's no gas actually inside the vehicle yet. It's the assembling of a gas vehicle, if you understand what I'm saying. It's coming straight out of a tree.
You don't repair gas vehicles?
We do, but like I said, it's not often. That's why I still wanted to make you aware of the situation, but it's not an often situation where we have them.
Well, get, what I was getting at is that if there was language in the, uh, special permit or whatever it is, that, um, once this was, was up and running, if they had to come back because of the neighbors or something for additional screening or something, that, that would be a requirement.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, Mike's been working on this for months now, and he's, uh, you know, everyone's really kinda itching to get underway here. So, you know, if, uh, we're just trying to make it pass this and get the special permit going, just so, just in the, you know.
As far as the site plan goes, I just think that corner of that retaining wall in the back by the bulkhead, if there was some way of cutting that corner off, you might rectify your, your radius as far as getting any, um, apparatus through there.
Was that this here?
Right here.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, you got this in your storage cars, hit vehicles.
Just for your own knowledge, like, flatbeds have come through there with materials to drop off for there, and the radius is made, no problem.
Yeah, when you look at the pictures, they look tight.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So, uh.
Is that picture from the rear that shows?
You're not speaking to the microphone, sir.
There's, there's a photo from the rear, like, looking at the shed and the, and the garage from there. That kinda shows more of, um, how much space is actually there.
Oh, it just shows the.
I mean, we've had, like, box trucks come in there with big giant plywood deliveries and, and everything.
The fire department is, is, Adam Hatch is concerned that they'll have to nose in and nose back out rather than be able to circulate the building. So, um, I think it's really gonna be up to the fire department to determine whether there's an adequate radius or not.
Yeah, I think the fire department has to, you, you haven't been to the fire department, right? Anybody?
No, no, we're just in the kind of beginning stages of this.
All right, so, uh, in this picture where it shows the stone wall in the front building, are those displays outside of that stone wall?
No.
No, they're up on the, there's a patio up next to left of the front door in the, in the front building there.
So, you mean this, this bush, bush system's going away?
Right there.
That's not where it shows, it shows it here.
They're proposing to cut down a tree and do some additional work to allow for the display vehicles.
That's just here. This is where the bushes are on the hedge.
Yep.
Yeah, these would not be in there. This, this is where the display would be.
What is this then?
That's, that's the garden bed right there.
No, this, the square's here, just like there is over here.
That's gonna be a car.
That's what I'm, I'm saying right now.
Those are the display vehicles.
Wouldn't be there, 'cause that is the bed that we would be having.
So, but, my point is, the picture for the, where the application shows vehicles on display right there.
I just noticed those now. I didn't notice them before.
So, I've suggested that they reduce the number of vehicles that are out front to five or six and no more than that, and not impact the landscaping as significantly as they're proposing.
Yeah, that's nice the way it is now. It makes it look like a house.
Yeah, the idea for, of this district, the zoning, the intent of the planning board's off-site parking regulations are that it is screened to look like a house and not to.
It's the whole, that was the whole intent of the whole thing.
Yeah, so, we have no landscaping proposed, but we are proposing to remove landscaping to, in order to display vehicles, which goes against your design guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, that's not happening. As it is, it looks like there's gonna be vehicles up on top of where there used to be grass, or there is grass.
Up top there, there, it's a, like a blue stone patio up there.
On, on the left side of your face in it?
Yeah, correct.
I see that.
So, there's room for three.
This is what I'm talking about there. That's, that's these vehicles.
There's room for three on the patio.
The other vehicles were up in here where these bushes and trees are.
So, those should be eliminated.
So, you can just, when the plan is redone, you just eliminate those ones on the landscape side, to Val's point, to keep that landscaping.
I would take this, if I was you, I know what you want us to do is say, yeah, go ahead, so you can go to the zoning board of appeals. I would take this to the, um, fire department.
Yeah, I can talk to Adam.
Talk to Adam. Get that cleared up, because our main things here with the site plan that's going to zoning is to take care of all that work so that they don't have to.
Right.
And they assume that we already have. When, when this, if we approve this and it goes to them, they assume we've checked all those boxes. So, safety is always for a fire police. Police, you don't have a problem. If fire, you might. Bring it to the fire department, make sure it's okay, so that when you, 'cause my, my guess is that this will pass this board, I would assume. If you make those changes on the landscape in our front, I can't say for sure, I'm just one member. But those, and you get it to the fire department, I think you're, you're a lot closer.
Yeah, are those changes that we could make tonight and, and submit, or is this gonna require another meeting here?
Um, it depends on the board, but I.
I mean, it's all gonna come up, like you said, in zoning, again, anyways, so we're just kinda trying to.
Well, what he's saying is it probably won't if we approve the site plan.
Okay.
That's why he's saying.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have any problem if the changes are made and it goes to you and Val or something, and I don't have any problem with that.
So, we can, uh, we could, uh... I think, it looks like they're scheduled for the twentieth of March, which is next week. Is that correct?
Correct.
For the ZBA hearing.
Twentieth of March.
Yeah, so that's next Wednesday.
We, we could approve a contingent on the, the fire department?
The fire department.
Being satisfied and contingent on those, those display, uh, spots above the stone wall on the, uh, northerly side of eliminated.
Okay.
And the cutting of the tree for the display vehicle on the south side, is that acceptable, or?
Does it show that tree in that picture?
It's right here.
Is it to make room for another display vehicle?
It is.
Yeah, there is a tree on the side of the building there. If we were gonna put, uh, display vehicles there, you have to remove that tree.
Are your display vehicles gonna be for sale, or are they just gonna be stationary out there to show your products?
So, the display vehicle are for sale.
They are for sale, probably.
They are for sale.
It's right here.
Oh. What is that thing?
Kinda ugly.
It's kind of, it's kind of, um...
It's a smiley-looking thing.
It is.
That tree?
Are you talking of the tree?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kinda old and had its day.
How much green space do you have, though? It's like, I don't see a lot. You got what's behind that stone wall. You got the tree on the left side. What else is there? Those places.
We're not too stern, actually, where the display vehicles go. Like, it doesn't really, quite frankly, make a difference to us. We were just displaying the ten vehicles that it was allowed with the bylaw. That's all we were trying to do. We really weren't too picky where they go, and as, they could even go on a parking spot, 'cause there is fifteen parking spots, but then there's only fourteen parking spots needed for the property.
Yeah, there's lots of parking.
Yeah, so it doesn't have to go on the specific.
And they're easily maneuverable, too.
Yeah, exactly. We're not very picky.
It seems to me that once, once the word gets out and your business starts to accumulate in that area, then you, you may not have to have those display vehicles out there. I know, I'll be checking them out. So.
Yeah, we do volume pretty fast. It just kinda quick turnovers.
Yeah, so I think, from what I'm gathering, is just to have those out front like that, I mean, I know just like. Yeah, it's kinda like, you go by there now, and it's, if you got nice landscape and stuff like that, it's, it's more appealing to look at than those things sitting out front.
Exactly. We don't, exactly. We're not too picky on where they go. We just, yeah, put a display out there.
Sure.
Anywhere you guys like it, honestly, doesn't really make a difference. We just wanna stick with the bylaw and keep ten out there.
Yeah.
What if you just take the display things off the plan?
Or leave a couple, so that people know that you exist.
Well, no, they're gonna display them. They should just decide where to put them later.
Yeah, and they're not, they're, like I said, they're not large vehicles or anything. We just wanted to kinda let you guys know that. Just wanted to stick within the bylaw, and like it says, it says ten display vehicles, and that's all we wanted to keep it with.
Well, it'll be, the special permit will allow the ZBA to, um, you know, you have to meet certain conditions for them in terms of adequate maneuverability and safety. So, it, the ten is suggested, but the, the zoning board of appeals has the power to condition.
Correct.
It looks like the display is not even where the trees, it tree is anyway, is it?
I didn't think it was.
So, in front.
I don't think it is.
It just says remove tree on the plan.
Yeah. Is that just to put one more vehicle there, to make ten?
That was just a, we're trying to get them off the, the pavement out front, really, which, well, those two are gone anyways, to be able to get the. To be able to get the fire trucks through there. I mean, the, the two, the two display vehicles that are on the, the pavement are most likely have to go, but I, I believe there's a, there's a maple tree up against the side of the building to the, um, back left of where the blue stone patio is, where one of the vehicles is, is going.
So, you can drive all the way around this building? It's good thing.
Yeah, there's, there's a good one around that goes by there.
Paid down.
This is the tree they're trying, like, cutting down the, but, uh.
Yeah, it's a scrappy thing right there.
Yeah.
It looks like you could probably still get two or three.
Just trim it up. Leave it there. My concern is, there's a lot of, like, pavement and gravel and not much granary.
Are you trying to be cognizant of?
The whole idea of this, go ahead, sir.
Are you trying to be cognizant of when you're repairing or servicing vehicles, trialing them around, driving around the parking lot during the day? That sort of thing, to remove trees, anything like that?
What are your hours of operation?
Uh, it's listed on there, but it's Monday through Sunday, we keep it on there. And I believe on that packet, it's listed eight to seven, eight AM to seven PM.
You have eight to six, Monday through Friday.
Eight to six, I apologize.
And eight to seven on the weekends, both days.
All seven days a week.
All seven days.
We kept it like that, 'cause depending on the varying of the season and what time of the year it is, it kinda varies. So, but definitely not gonna keep it like that all year round, but we'd like to keep it like that, so when certain seasons switch around, they were able to adjust our hours and have that flexibility in that motion to do that.
I don't like that. But, that's me, I'm old fashioned, I think Sunday should be closed.
Yeah, it's tough, just 'cause a lot of guys have work and stuff throughout the week, so they like to make appointments to come down and see you on the weekends and stuff, and we try to make that available for our customers, so they can have their time to see you too, 'cause a lot of people do work Monday through Friday.
I mean, down the street there's a Cumberland Farms, and we, we limited their time of opening.
I just, I wanna call out again that the, the sign for the site is in the public layout, and staff is recommending that the sign be pulled back into the site.
If I could touch on that, we just pulled the permit for that sign, um, a few years back, you know, so...
Yeah, it's unfortunate that it's in the public layout.
I'm sure when you took permit for the sign, you didn't tell the, the inspector that it was in the public layout.
I, I could speak to that for a bit, there, there seems to be a discrepancy between the previous survey plan that was done that really does, it's, it's not tied properly, in my opinion, into the, the Crescent Street layout into Route 3A. So when we went out there and did a more recent survey, there's a, there's a curve there that, that basically the previous survey was carrying over a plan from the seventies where it looks like he didn't really do, you know, the way that we would do it today to have it tied in there, so if they relied on the plan from before, they, they would have it not in the, uh, in the public way, but it looks like, you, you know, now that, when we show that curve being there, that, that that's how it is, so they, they didn't really create that, that problem. But I, I don't think it would be too big of a deal to basically pivot that sign about ninety degrees and get it, well, you know, I mean, you can, you can move it a little bit and get it onto the, onto the lot if they had to. Um, you know, but I, I will also touch on the fact that we talked about that island there, that I, I think it looks great the way that it is now, it's grass, it's landscaped, in, in my opinion.
And there are the other, you know, there's pro-auto down the street, they don't have any plantings anywhere, there's pro-limo right there, they don't have any plantings, there's...
I think the idea here is that the town is trying to use its design guidelines and its standards to improve the look and feel of the town, rather than...
Right, I understand that, but I, I also, I also think that's one of the nicer buildings, uh, in that area for sure, um, so...
This is 3A design, right?
Uh, I'm not positive about that.
3A design?
No, I believe it's just commercial.
With the back in R twenty.
Val, does this, um, if we move forward and approval of this, will that sign cause any issues down the road being in that layout?
It potentially could, because if we need to get in there and make improvements or put utilities in, it'll have to be moved, so...
Well, could we move it at that time, then? Would that be a possibility? I mean, we're just trying not, not to, I mean, we, we just trying not to spend a ton of money for, you know, something, no offense to Mike, but if, you know, say, say his business, say he goes out of business in a couple of months and we put all this money into the property, and I mean, is it something that could be maybe suspended and looked at for, you know, a, a year from now, or six months from now, or something in that matter, or?
I'm open to that, I think it should be addressed, I don't think we should just say, well, you know, it's okay, it's on a site plan that we're approving.
Oh, that's what it is, it's some commercial with a small portion that's...
All the way in the back is R twenty.
The very rear of the lot, I think, is, um...
Behind a wetland.
A portion of the, uh, is residential. That's back where they're trying to put all those units, the forty units or whatever, off of Smith Lane.
I don't have a problem with the sign, I'll just speak for myself. Um, but if the town decides to widen that road and it's in the layout, it's gone.
Yep, that's true, if it's damaged or whatever by a plow, that's on you.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a sidewalk there now, and the sign obviously is on the, the building side of the, of the sidewalk, so it's, you know, when you're standing out there in the sidewalk, you wouldn't think that it's in the, the layout, if, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at it is not, not to spend, spend your money, but, you know, that might be, it's nice 'cause that island's there, but it might be nice, throw some shrubs in there, just to kinda alleviate
Yeah.
a few things that are going on with the display vehicles or whatever, no, nothing major, just, you know, doctor it up a little bit.
Sure.
Yeah, it's kinda bland. Well, I, uh, what does the board wanna do, we can, we can, we can pass this thing, uh, contingent on the fire department okaying it, and what was the second thing?
Okay.
Removal of the two.
If, if I can, so tell you...
Go ahead.
Yeah, that we would want the, uh, we need a lien certificate showing that there's no outstanding taxes or, or late taxes or fees.
Repeat that?
Municipal lien certificate.
Go ahead.
Where we'll take away the shed being moved, the sign, we're noting that it's in the layout and it's there, there beware that it's in the layout. We need new plans that show the maneuverability to be reviewed and approved by the fire department. And then that would be, you know, subsequently shown to the planning, town planner to certify that they've received that from the fire department and the ZBA. That we'd like to see a landscaping plan that describes what the fence is, and also, um, we're recommending that there be some bed plantings in the front lawn area. That on the northwest of the corner, there won't be display vehicles parked in the existing landscaped area.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm sorry, do, do we need the fence there, now, that, now we talked about the berm?
No, we're talking about the existing, the fence that's shown is saying that it's a proposed fence, but it doesn't describe the fence, it could be chain link, it wouldn't do anything.
I know, so, so, we, we had discussed about the, the natural screening?
We're not, we're not asking you to do any additional landscaping on the sides, we're asking you to do additional landscaping in the front.
Right, no, I know, but the fence, the fence for the screening?
The fence is shown on the plans with no description of the fence.
I understand, but the, the fence, there's, there's the earth berm on both sides of the back parking lot there that are basically gonna be higher than the fence.
What kind of fence is it, that's what we're asking.
We, we haven't decided, we, we either talked about doing some kinda stockade fence or just the chain link fence with the slats in it, I mean, I think those are kinda ugly, but, um, we...
We're just asking you to describe the fence.
Yeah, I, it could be either one. Um, as far as I understand, it's screening, something to block the public view, but as I said, the, the berms on both sides and the, and the natural screening is kinda already doing that job, it'd kinda be, I think a waste to put a fence that you can see over from the neighboring lots, if that's the...
So what's the purpose of the fence?
It's, it's just to check the box for the bylaw.
So do we need a fence?
No, we were just actually just trying to, it was, it was, it was just to try to help better the property in some way, to...
I think the landscaping out front would be more desirable.
Yeah, that's, that's what she was trying to hint at, yeah, instead, instead of doing the fence, maybe, you know, like you said, put the shrubs up front and stuff.
So let's take the fences off.
Okay.
Alright, well...
And then, no exterior lighting is shown or approved, and it can't be, this site plan approval can't be transferred to new owner without further review, or tenant, I guess, owner or tenant without further review through an administrative meeting by the planning board, just to make sure that any changes are addressed. And then we're asking that it be, um, any of these be done within two years, just so that it doesn't linger, any of these, the landscaping, those kinds of things.
Yeah, two years is too long.
Okay.
It should be done before they get occupied.
Before occupancy.
Should be done before they occupy it?
That's fine.
We're not asking for a lot. And we're allowing you not to have to do the fence, which is probably the biggest expense of everything.
So there's just no...
And I think you could just trim that tree up on the side, so there's no low hanging branches and you can leave it, that's my opinion.
So the, but these two trees on the northwest corner...
I mean, I don't, unless it's really a big view, is it?
And no vehicles in the parking lot.
In keeping with the neighborhood. I mean, you have houses on each side of you there, you're not?
Yes, residential.
Residential on both sides, so you talk about, someone was talking about the one down the street, well, it's commercial, 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 commercial. It's a little different than this, we have residential on both sides.
Well, there is the commercial building behind, behind that residential that they, um, they get that Clipper, Clippership building there that wraps around the back, that, that touches the back portion of the lot, but yes, there, there are two apartment houses to their side.
Residential.
Yeah.
Alright, well...
Just leave the display vehicles on the patio in front of the tree.
Okay.
Get rid of the rest.
Okay, so I think, I think we've covered everything, um, and we'll just ask the fire department to check in on the gas vehicle stuff about spill containment and venting, um, while they look at the site plan, and that's a recommendation for the ZBA. And all repairs will take place inside of the building and not in the parking lot.
Valerie, could I ask one other question?
Yeah.
The municipal lien, where do I obtain that? Our taxes are paid, but I, I don't know where to get it.
You go to the town and you ask for a municipal lien certificate from the collector's office, and they just print one out, and I think there's a small fee for that.
No problem.
And that's how we know that there's nothing in arrears and we're all set.
It's fifty bucks.
Sometimes it's twenty bucks, I don't know how much it is, depends on the town.
I think the last one I got was fifty, maybe?
It's probably fifty.
Yeah, but there's no fence, so it's a lot cheaper.
John, can I borrow twenty bucks?
If I can get a ride over there.
Alright, so, so on the north side of the property with the stone walls, with the hedges, no vehicles, um, I'm just reviewing what Val said, uh, what, the tree is gonna remain, be trimmed for, um, um, display vehicles. The front greener, green area will have some shrubbery. Uh, we're not requiring you to put it in writing and put it on a drawing, which we usually do, so make it nice, please, since you don't have to build the fence, it's on the thing, that's the other thing, you don't have to build the fence. What else was it? You need the municipal lien certificate, you need an okay from the fire department. These are the contingencies that we pass us, elimination of the fence.
Yeah, you got the display vehicles off of that.
What is that you're circling, Bob?
We'll leave the tree.
We're gonna leave the tree on the front building, yes, I said that already.
This one, approval of the fire department for the turning radius and for the, uh, chemicals, right? Hazardous materials.
Yeah, and that, for us, it's the turning radius, for the ZBA, we recommend that they look at the gas traps, venting, and, and storage of materials inside the garage.
They gotta look at that, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what type of turning radius do they require, is it twenty foot?
They have a diagram for the new equipment.
And that's in the, um...
They'll provide it to you?
Oh, okay, alright.
You just sit down with Adam and talk about it.
Okay.
In some cases in a building like this, they, they might just say, as long as they can get her on all sides of it and they have to pack out, they'll, it might be fine.
Yeah, receive their blessing.
You just need to sit down and go over the plan with Adam.
It's just the idea of, of getting their blessing on it, so that, uh...
I would invite him out.
Yeah, and I would do that before the ZBA hearing.
Alright, does anybody have a, a motion that's, you don't have to, you can repeat everything, or you don't have to, if you don't want to, you can say moved as discussed, or you can say you don't like any of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions listed, um, on Valerie's notes.
Second?
As, as amended in discussion.
As what?
As we've amended during discussion.
As we've amended during discussion.
In other words, there's some stuff we, we've eliminated off that list, and some stuff we've added.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, does anybody, everybody understand, since we didn't describe every little thing, we, Valerie did it once, I did it again, everybody understands? Okay, so it's been moved by John?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by who?
Alex.
Any further discussion? Val, do you have anything further?
No.
Alright, so you know you have homework before, to do in order for this approval to be final, is it final, um, I'm gonna ask John, 'cause you moved it and Alex, he seconded it, is it final upon Val and, and, and our decision?
Absolutely, yes.
We usually do?
Yep.
Okay, Val?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's contingent on us being satisfied that those things are met. Alright, since there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Post, extensions, it's four zero zero, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sorry to put you through that, but... You want your pictures? You want your pictures for the zoning board? You have a good night.
You as well.
See ya, take care.
Alright, so that is all set. Valerie, thank you for that whole report, it was really awesome.
Thank you.
There's a lot of info, yeah.
I know, I didn't, I, I read, threw everything and I didn't quite finish that.
That's a lot.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's one of those sites where you just, there's a lot to talk about, and I think we came up with a really good compromise there.
I do, too.
Yep.
And we drive, we drive by that every day, so, it'd be nice to have some landscaping out front.
Oh, look, way nicer, way nicer.
Especially around that side, you know, it'll, it'll look nice.
It'll, it'll accent the sign better.
Yeah.
Accentuate. Alright, uh, enforcement of un-mat conditions of the special permit at one twenty-one Main Street, in case you're not familiar, that's the daycare center and the Dunkin' Donuts, and that's Mr. Scott Spencer, and, um, just to, uh, I'll give my recap. Uh, there was a lot of pressure to get the Dunkin' Donuts open, be, um, not so, well, from everybody. They had negotiated a deal with Mr. Spencer, things dragged on, he had some personal issues or business issues, or maybe a combination of both that he described to us. We were patient, um, Dunkin' Donuts began getting impatient, um, we wanted it open as, as much as they did. We, um, we allowed them to move in under certain conditions where there would be a fence. Yep, first of all, the, uh, utilities would be covered with some kind of a structure, which they did. There'd be some kind of a hedge between the road and the drive-through, a hedge and a fence, and/or a fence. There would be, um, the slab doors that are flat, ugly, commercial looking doors would be changed with some more decorative slabs, and then that there would be some, um, artificial, uh, or real windows that are blacked out, um, in the attic area in different places. And the only thing that got done was utilities, as far as I can see. Anybody see anything different than that?
No, they put the, the, yeah, the screened fence around the utilities and mechanicals in the back, and then they stopped.
So, um, I, um, I contacted Scott Spencer, Valerie has contacted Scott Spencer. Nobody is getting any answers, no callbacks, no anything. So, I don't know if you guys think it's a good idea, but my idea is, and Val's idea, I shouldn't say it's mine, and Aaron's, 'cause it's smarter than me, remember, um, is to write him a letter saying that we will be forced to, uh, revert to measures we don't want to, meaning closing of existing businesses.
Remove the occupancy permit.
Correct. And this letter will go to Scott Spencer. Um, I think it could, should go to town council, and I think it should go to, um, um, Dunkin' Donuts. And I think it should go to, um, Jason Silva.
Didn't we ask Jason to send this letter already?
We sent the letter to Jason and copied Scott and Scott's lawyer, saying that, yeah, we said, and that was in December after months of trying to get ahold of him and him saying, yeah, I'll get to it, I'm gonna do it in the fall.
Did that come from this board, that letter?
Yes.
But a couple of, few meetings ago, you weren't here.
Yeah, in December.
We decided to have Jason send him a letter.
Yeah, so this letter is, I, I talked to Jason again. He has said that he would like the planning board to direct him, um, and to send this letter out and address it again so that he can start enforcement. And have some backing behind him again, you know, so. This is, I mean, I'm, I, I, I know, maybe I missed that part of it, which I did, cause I wasn't here. But I recently talked to Jason, and this is part of his and Valerie's, uh, direction. So I think this letter should be formed and sent.
I don't know why he sent it to Dunkin' Donuts. It's not their problem.
No, but I, if they, if they wanna put pressure on him, all the better.
I, I, I don't care if the whole town gets it, I'm just saying.
Right, I just want them to get it. My idea of them getting it, so they can put the pressure on him.
I, I agree with that. I, you know, this, this site, this site has been.
Far as I'm concerned, they can hold back rent.
This, this site has been like a sensitive site over the years, that we've had applications and then pulling out and, you know, everybody was really up in arms about what was gonna go there, so we've gone this far.
This has gone on for twenty years.
We've gone this far, and it's, it's like, it's so close to being right. It just, it needs to be followed through. So I, I am in a hundred percent agreement with that.
Do you remember that night of the meeting when they sat here and I said to my, and Bill Fortichard was here, and I said, I feel like we're just getting lip service here? And he says, no, 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 we'll take care of it.
Absolutely.
And as soon as he got his occupancy permit, he disappeared.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, we can write that letter.
Do you need a motion?
I do. I would like it to be a motion, a motion to send a letter. Approved by Valerie and myself or whatever. I don't care, just Valerie, it's fine.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, have Valerie write a letter of enforcement to Jason, our building commissioner and zoning officer, first, the special permit for one twenty-one Main Street.
Second. So that letter will reflect all the things we just discussed, Val, uh, Val?
Yep.
You understand what those are? We understand what those are. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, extensions?
If it's gonna go to Dunkin' Donuts, like, we should just send it to all the tenants. There's only two of them, right?
Yep, we can send it to the learning center too.
Well, that's even better.
Yep.
That okay with you, Jonathan and Alex?
Love that, I do.
That, that other, that other unit's still empty, right?
Yeah, we're not.
It's gonna be for a long time.
Yeah, they don't have the parking, and we've also said to him that if he doesn't finish, that's one of the things he really can't entertain, is putting anyone else in that building, even if he were to figure out the parking.
Tried to work.
But that's not motivating him either, so, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we have, um, next on our agenda, we have minutes, I believe.
Well, you have a little PowerPoint from Val.
Oh, where is that under?
On town planner report.
Oh, town planner report. MBTA zoning, oh, this is good, yeah. I want, I want you to do this. Zoning task force meeting update. I will say Val's working hard on this, trying to satisfy, uh, I'm not gonna call him when I do last, I, Val doesn't like it when I do that.
Yeah, so, um, I, I've timed this out. It's about five to eight minutes long. It, I'll try to be as brief as I can.
Sure.
Um, but we're all hearing about MBTA communities, and I wanted to, we're gonna present this to the selectmen tomorrow night as well. And, uh, we haven't talked about this since way back when this was, um, proposed, and we were not happy about it. We told the state that we weren't happy about it. Um, the state's pushed back on everyone, saying, that's, we hear you, but we're still moving forward with this, so I'm just gonna walk us through where we are. Can you click? Why is this, uh, what is an MBTA community? Why is it important? Who's working on this? What steps have been taken, and where are we? Um, so why is because there's a, as we've talked about earlier tonight, a national housing crisis. It's even international, if you will, in Europe and Japan, where there's just not a lot of housing, um, especially housing for people who have lower to moderate income. But also just the type of housing, this, this, as Lynn Sweet mentioned earlier, the size of the units is sometimes much larger than what's needed because household sizes have become smaller over time. It's just the, the shape of the population has changed. Um, so Massachusetts is losing workforce, um, to places that have already new-built housing that doesn't need work. And we have better seasons in different parts of the country, so there's a change. You can see people are moving out of Massachusetts. And a lot of that out-moving is towards the south or out west, um, and that's based on census data. And Kingston is no different. Go to the next slide. So I'm gonna use my pointer here. It's kinda hard to see on this chart, but this is just a, uh, the last forty years of population in Kingston. And the, um, this lighter blue line is nineteen ninety. So in nineteen ninety, we had a, uh, high population of, of children. And this is by percentage by age group, so younger generations here, middle age here, retirement age out here. And the light gray line is where we are today, so it's lower in terms of the students. This is, uh, when you get to fifteen to nineteen to twenty. But the student age is lower than it's been in forty years compared to where it was. And then you get to the young, younger adults, and again, uh, we had a much higher number of percentage of the population years ago than we do today. We're, we're down to here, and we have the lowest line in terms of the population. And you can see the peaks in the past, um, move from older, or, or moving towards older. So the middle-aged group is getting older in place. And then, when you get to the retirement age, you see a big spike. A, a large portion of our population is in that demographic. And that's continuing because people live longer, um, but they do get closer together as you get to like age seventy-four and on. So I just wanted to show that we have, um, that trend here in Kingston. Um, that we talked about earlier tonight, um, the housing pop, uh, prices are, continue to go up. That's hard to see, but the median house price as of February of this year is, um, over six hundred thousand dollars. Prices for a single bedroom have gone up sixty-seven percent since last year. Um, they've gone up in every category in terms of bedroom count except for two fa, uh, two-bedroom, which has actually gone down just about two percent. But the, they, they go up by, um, seven to eleven to thirty to sixty-six percent. So it just keeps going up. And that's not affordable for our population. Um, this is just a breakout of the types of housing. This is single-family housing here in Kingston. And then everything else, whi, which is a small percentage. This is the ten percent line, and everything's below that in terms of two-family, multifamily, um, uh, it's just something where we don't have a lot of options here in Kingston. Which, again, we talked about a little bit earlier in our attempt to make ADUs more accessible. Next slide, please. So what is an MBTA community? What am I talking about? It's a new chapter of the zoning bylaw known as chapter three A, section three A of the zoning bylaw. So MBTA communities are, um, described by the state as having or being near an MBTA station. We have a commuter rail, so we're considered a commuter rail community. Um, that means, under these new regulations, we have to adopt new zoning for multifamily housing by right. And that means we have to have at least fifty acres zoned for it. We have to have, um, at least eight hundred and five unit capacity in that zoning district. And we don't have to build it, but we have to zone for it, and it has to be no age restrictions. Um, so we could go back one, so just.
Does he know what?
No age restrictions. We can't say that they have to be seniors.
All right, gotcha.
Okay. Um, this is a, a map, a color-coded map. That's Boston. You can see it's all of eastern Massachusetts that has anything to do with, um, any, being anywhere near a commuter rail or a T or a bus stop, bus station. So this is Kingston down here. We're green because we have the commuter rail. And for us, that means that that's our, there's the T. Uh, on this map, uh, exit seventeen is right here off the highway, and you come in and down to get to the T. Um, this is Indian Pond Estates, and this is that half-mile radius that's under the regulations where we're supposed to cite that zoning. So we'll talk about that some more as we go on. Um, we have to adopt this by October, which is our town meeting this fall, in order to be compliant with the town's, uh, regulations under the state guidelines.
That's the blackmail deadline?
Yep.
Sorry about that.
If we don't do it, what's, what happens? We can lose grant funding, for starters. And we've gotten.
That's blackmail.
That's six million dollars for what we did to get Lowe's, Amazon, and elevated routes. Where, you know, these are not, these are good revenue tax base for the town. Uh, water and sewer expansions, over half million dollars for land acquisition for open space and, uh, water quality protection. Twenty thousand dollars plus any future funds for municipal vulnerability, which is more like sea level rise and, um, culverts being resized to handle storms, which we'll need. And then we did a forty-five thousand dollar study on the old fire station on Maple Street. Um, we have to do the cleanup. We know we have to do it, but we got the funding to figure out how, how much that would cost from the state. So those are just examples of the kinds of money we're talking about, millions of dollars. What else is at risk? We've seen what's happened to Milton. They didn't adopt it. They've already lost a grant, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a seawall. And they're being, um, fined and sued by the state. And that lawsuit says something along the lines like, you can't enforce your zoning until you enact this. So this is a really tight situation for Milton. Um, there's a whole lot of communities under today, this year's deadline, so.
They can, they can enact what until they.
I think it says something along the lines, the state is pursuing an option that would, in this lawsuit, that would prevent Milton from enforcing its zoning code until it comes into compliance.
Wow. Before you, before you were only gonna lose grants.
The state means it.
Now you're gonna lose your zoning to enforcement privileges.
Yeah, so.
And if you ignore that, then you're gonna like lose like your first bond.
And you're fighting fee, you're fighting fines where they're making more and more grants available for, if you zone. And we all know that the water and sewer is not only a limiting factor here in Kingston, but along the entire South Shore. That doesn't mean it won't someday be built, but, um, it is something that's, the capacity issue is a known question that hasn't been answered.
And the, the crazy thing about it is the money that they're talking about is our money.
Yeah.
The money they don't wanna give back to us, it's our money anyway.
Sorry, it's our taxes.
So.
Yeah.
It's called BS.
Yeah, so what, what is Kingston doing? We've, we formed a task force. Next slide, please. So we asked each of the planning board, the selectmen, CONCOM, super commission, and water commission to, um, select a member. And the selectmen appointed this task force. And we got two grants already from the housing partnership. The first one, we hired Old Colony Planning Council to do some preliminary work. The second grant, we got, um, at the end of last year, we've hired VHB, um, who's a professional consultant, and they're doing what's called compliance modeling. Each town is required to send their zoning up to the state. The state has to verify that it will be buildable. It can't be something where you pick a, a pond in a wetland and say, we're gonna put it there. They know where the wetlands are. They have aerial photos. They've already downloaded all the zoning and information about the, each town. Um, and then we're, we're studying that now, and then, um, we're doing public outreach. This is step one of that public outreach, is to start with the board, the planning board and the selectmen.
Good job.
Thanks. Um, so I just wanna go a little bit into what we're thinking about and working with VHB as a task force. Um, next slide. So we're looking at that same circle. It kinda goes up and off the screen now, but there's your T station. There's exit seventeen. And what we tried to do was look at a couple of things. The only way to get to the train station is from exit seventeen. There's no other road that gets you in there. You come off exit seventeen, you come down, um, get through to Gallen and then Marion to the T parking lot, which is here. You have Indian Pond Estates residential here. You have some houses in here. You have the elementary school, some houses there. You have the, the wastewater treatment plant and the landfill here. And, um, but what's, what's really key is we have water, we have sewer, and we have roads right in that same area as you get a little further away from the T station and towards that edge of that circle, right there. And what's right on the edge of that circle? The apartments we've just built. And that's two hundred and eighty-two units, and we said, well, let's try and take credit for that because those are family-friendly, multifamily housing. So we talked to the state. Next slide, please. Um, we said, look, state, we've got our mall complex with new ownership on the line where that circle is. And like I just talked about, we have wastewater treatment plant, a landfill, we have, uh, leaching fields, we have the elementary school, we have conservation land, we have more conservation land and leaching fields. And we have the river with Smelt Brook running through that we have to stay away from. And we have what was the forty A site, which is now a, um, what's called a reclamation soil site under an administrative consent order with the DEP. That's, uh, soils that are very high. There's many, many, many cubic yards. And those have to be capped with at least ten feet of clean fill before they're suitable for anyone to use. And we don't know if the, if the soil will be structurally sound to support multifamily housing, so we're looking away from that as being family-friendly.
What's on that land now?
Well, there's a couple of turbines.
I'm just trying to picture where that is. It's like, I know you pointed it certain time.
Yeah, so, next, right in front of the, the train station, there's a couple of wind turbines you can see from the highway.
Yeah.
The T has its own wind turbine right there. So you have flicker and, and other disturbances. And then this is where the trucks come in every day off the highway and come into Mary's property, Mary O'Donnell.
And dump the contaminated stuff?
Yeah. Actually, the Tyler dug in, the, the O'Donnell family was here earlier this evening. Um, so they're bringing in, right all through here is fill. There's a solar array here. So it's not a great site anymore for this forty R overlay district, and the state agrees. So next slide, please. They agreed to give us a waiver to let us try and count that apartment building. Sixty percent can be outside of that area, forty percent still has to be within it. But that's better than a hundred percent being in.
That's a good waiver.
Yeah, so that was a good, uh, negotiation that we had with the state. Now, we've come up with this shape of two districts right now. This is where we are, uh, which is just over the minimum eight hundred and five that we have to have. It's close to eight hundred and twenty. And we're shaving, shaving, shaving as we go. Um, this is where the apartment complex is, right, again, to get you oriented. This is the highway. Um, this is Lowe's right here. Um, this is the T, the parking lot. So it's, what's cool about this part is, um, that's the new mall. And the new owners of the mall, who have a lot of investment capital, who are trying to think about what to do with it. And if we look at what Hanover's done, they've added housing and they've renovated the, the mall to become a really cool destination. So this is an incentivizing approach to redevelopment of an existing developed site by using this. So we're hoping that we're being proactive here, and, um, the mall's been at all of our task force meetings to listen in. of our task force meetings to listen in. And we also have the, this, this area, which is fronting on Marion and Gallon, and it's the storage center area, a little bit of the Toyota area, and a couple of businesses that run along here. I have met with every one of those business owners and talked to them about what we're, what this would be, which is an overlay district, which would not impact the underlying zoning or uses. So they, of course, they have some questions, but they are familiar with it, and they are listening, and we're gonna keep them in the loop.
Yeah, so it's like Dorchester Arning, there's the mailing company, there's A-plus storage.
Yeah. And, and so-
That's, that's that area that's, that's inside the circle as well.
Yeah. And that's, we're, at, we're going to the absolute minimum that we can in the circle. The part that's inside the circle also, this sub-district up here, we're proposing that it would be a smaller scale. So when you're out here, we already have a four-story building. The mall people don't wanna go any higher than that. If they do, they don't know what they're gonna do yet, but if they did, they wouldn't go any higher than four stories. Out here, we're talking more like two or three stories, because it's more in keeping with what's already there. But you're not gonna see that intensity, because there's smaller lots, there's not as much parking available. But we're gonna do some sketches for them, because they wanted, they had questions about what it would, what would it look like, especially Toyota dealer wanted some more information. So we have been able, the mall has shared a lot of their topo and information with our VHB consultants, so that we can do some nice visuals to help people understand what we're talking about a little bit better as, as we do more outreach. So this is where we're at. We're hoping to have an open house in late March, early April with the public, right before one of our planning board meetings, so people can come in and ask questions and look at the boards. We'll have our consultant come in, talk to you. And we'll be coming back to you to, to talk about what the zoning language would be that would go with the district. So the district is the shape and the location, and, and it meets the, the GIS mapping criteria. But then we add language because we'd have site plan review. And that part, we're gonna draft. And, and part of the advantage of going a little later than some of the other towns that are going through it right now is we get to see what the state has to say about all that different zoning. Like, for example, one community near us is having some trouble with their zoning because it also overlaps where there's an adult-use district. And little things like that, that people wouldn't catch right off the bat. We wanna try to be a little bit behind that curve, so we have the advantage of learning from every, everyone else's feedback that the state gives. The state's been more and more open to conversation in the past six months than they were while we were going through the review of the guidelines. So it's, we've had some good conversations. Our, our deadline for meeting town meeting here in the planning board is July one. And why is that? The state's gonna take ninety days to review the paper language. They'll have already reviewed the district shape, but then the, the paper language takes ninety days for the state to review. And that'll give us just enough time to tweak anything we have on the warrant for fall town meeting. So one of the reasons that we were a little bit later also was knowing that there was a potential for a new owner at the mall, and wanting to make sure that we timed anything we were talking about with them openly, so that they had the opportunity to understand what, what the town is up to, and how this, they don't have to use this, but it's something that could help them with some of their objectives and ours, which would be to make the mall a more feasible, desirable site for our community. So, like I said, we do have those caps of water and sewer. They're looking at redeveloping that site with those caps in place. And so this, this is what we think is a good suggestion for the town in terms of the approach, that at least we don't have the cost for infrastructure, and we're trying to redevelop existing sites that are already happily in use. If, if it comes down to it, it would be by right. So any questions?
No, I think you, no, good. That was great.
How big was that radius?
It's a half mile.
Half mile.
So if, if most of that land, you can't do it on.
Right.
Don't we get, doesn't that affect the amount of, the, we're forced to use?
Nope. They didn't give us a waiver on how much. They just said it has to be forty percent within, sixty percent out.
Any restriction on how far the without has to be?
None. But we couldn't think of a better spot.
Yeah.
And at first, it was one large district, and the, we kept changing the shape and making it smaller and smaller, because we wanna make sure the capacity is the minimum, that, that we meet the state's requirement, but no more than that. And the reason we focused in that area is because we really wanted to capture the existing two-hundred-and-eighty-two units that qualify. Those are at eighteen units per acre. And as I said earlier, we have to be at least fifteen units per acre. So those count. And those are existing. So that gets us down lower to only needing, if it shows up, it would be five hundred units. It's still not great.
Well, is, are, are any of, to your knowledge, are any of these towns that, that are adopting this zoning, are, are they even anywhere close to being able to meet these percentages?
Yeah, I mean, well, so of thirteen towns that had to do it by the end of last year, twelve adopted them, and they met the requirements.
They met the requirements. Wow.
Milton adopted it too, but then had a town meeting to reverse it.
Wow.
Or an election, if you will, special election. And now we have many, like, now it's dozens of towns that aren't as urbanized, that are heading into their spring town meeting right now with their language and hoping to move it forward. Adjacent communities, if you will, are towns that don't actually have the station within them. So Plymouth actually counts as an adjacent community, but because of their size, they still have to build like, or zone for, excuse me, over two thousand units. So they're trying to do the same thing, take credit for what they already have.
Are they still considered MBTA, even though they're not, are they running like commuter line?
No. It's not a commuter rail. It's just an occasional train.
So what about like Plimpton? Do they have to do it?
Yeah, I think Plimpton became a rural community. There are some towns that are just so small that the requirements went from the large capacity to much smaller. So Plimpton is one of those. They've passed their zoning, but I think Pembroke might be the one that had an adult-use conflict. I know another town, Essex, is, is rural, but they have enough zoning to allow it to just be as-is. So some towns are able to do it, very few, without having to do a zoning change, but others are making adaptations to already existing higher-density zoning around their train stations. We're just not one of those train stations that built up that way. We built with an industrial park. So-
You know, it's not a lot of ride on circle. It's, it's funny that that adult thing came into conflict, 'cause they put in both those things where they didn't care about anything being. It's like, I don't know if you remember, Bob, but when we had zoning at town meeting for adult stores or whatever it is, adult, what does it call?
Adult use, I think.
Adult use. Everybody's like, why are you doing this? We don't want this in our town. And we're trying to explain to them, if we don't do it and name a place, then it can be anywhere.
Yeah.
And people didn't get it. But we didn't put it in the mall, because we figured the mall would never want that in their place. Of course, hopefully, maybe they forgot about it, 'cause they were pretty desperate. They probably could've filled it up with adult use.
Oh, my gosh.
Fox.
I don't, I'm quite sure that's not gonna happen.
But that's why we put it there. It's because they figured out the mall will never want that, 'cause it'll ruin the stores.
Yeah. And then, so if, I mean, if there's any other questions, we're just, we'll be back probably every meeting or every other meeting right through June with some information on, on the zoning.
That was good work, Colbel. Yeah, I know. Thank you. I'm glad the thing's been slow enough with everything else, so that you could really dive into that.
Yeah, it's, it's been hundreds of hours, really, when you look at the, all the conferences and meetings. And we're in a peer, we're in a couple of different grants, so we're happy to have gotten support from the state. The housing authority, or, excuse me, the Mass Housing Partnership has given us these two grants. So we have gotten some help, but it's, it's definitely a huge project.
Okay. Well, now we have the OCPC corridor study.
Yeah, we're, we're, through the fall of this year, we're engaged with Old Colony Planning Council. People saw the counters in the past, in the fall, going from where the mall is all the way to the other end of town. That was Old Colony Planning Council doing the traffic counts as part of the study. But we're looking at the corridor from Plymouth Town Line on Main Street all the way to where it turns into Fifty-three and gets up to the Duxbury Town Line. We're looking at the Main Street, that corridor. And working with Aaron and Matt and Jason, we've been able to break up that corridor into some open space kind of areas that are residential open space, and a, and two or three that are like the downtown historic area. And then you've got from like Cancun's east to Plymouth. And then you've got another section on the, on the other end of town. And we're trying to characterize those areas and get some, we're doing, Aaron's doing yeoman's work on giving the information to Old Colony Planning Council about what kind of businesses we have, what, where we have multifamily. And then we're able to share that with them and get responses back about the traffic and about zoning or neighborhood character that we can start to build on. And if we can break these things down into manageable chunks, which is what we're doing, we're, we're gonna combine that with another study that we're doing, which is a town-wide traffic safety study through environmental partners. And they're gonna come with the top ten budgeted items for local roads and for state roads. We're gonna go to the state and say, look, this is our corridor. This is our main commercial area. This is our gateway. Here's stuff we want you to do. Here's all the data behind why we need it. So we're kinda trying to take all the public benefit monies and where we can do studies to get more money and get grants. We're hoping to do that. So all of that's gonna work together over the next couple of months, and we'll be sharing that information and looking for input from this board and the public on, on those kinds of suggestions coming from Old Colony Planning Council. So it's been a while since we talked about that, and I just wanted to give you a quick update.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. We have a couple of minutes put together by the one and only, Aaron. Oh, before I forget it, before it leaves my brain, is Rich Caddy's appointment still valid?
Well, I think until the election, it is.
I don't know if we renewed it at the-
I think the appointment went through till the next election.
I don't know if we, when we re-
Which is April or-
Organized?
I feel like it's April of this year itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I-
Can you check with him and see if he's still, if we needed him, if he's still available?
Yep.
So, 'cause we, we haven't needed him. I'm, I still, I know if we need him, I wanna make sure he's available.
Okay.
All right. We'll do.
Okay, thanks. All right. So meeting minutes, we have March twenty-fifth.
We do.
March?
No, that's what it's-
No. We have January.
I'm, I'm-
Twenty-seventh.
I'm way past my bedtime.
That's regularly now.
November twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
We have January eighth and November twenty-seventh. Let's start with November twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as, as written.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed. Substitution would be me. I was not present. Okay, now we have January eighth. And Bob was not here, and Alex was not here. And David is not here, so we can't do that one. So that one's out. And next meeting is March twenty-fifth. I was ready to do the minutes for that night. That's how, that's how ahead of things Aaron is. She's got the minutes all done for March twenty-fifth. Well, thank you, everybody, for a wonderful meeting. Got a lot of things done.
Yep.
And we haven't done a lot of things for a long time. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Moved by Jonathan. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Alex. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jonathan?
I said aye.
Okay.
I screamed it.
I thought that was Bob. Okay, that's a four-zero-zero. Everybody's in favor of adjourned.